Good evening, everyone, everyone here and I'm sure the millions of people who are at home watching. I am, sorry, standing in for President Nelson and I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Member Amawala. Here. Member Kelly Nelson. Member Wolfinger.
Here.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Here.
Member Glebe.
Here.
Member Jacobs.
Here.
And member Chan.
Here.
So can we have Bushra read the land acknowledgements?
At Skokie School District Seventy-three and a Half, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Ojibuit, Odawa, Potawami, Hoochuck, Miami, Menomi, Sac, and Fox Nations and Kekapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggle for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of dispossession upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous peoples and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present-day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thanks, Member Amawala. I would like to acknowledge that we do have quorum. So those who are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the first point of public comments. I'd like to remind anyone who is making a public comment that they're limited to three meetings, three minutes, I'm sorry. No personal names, no attacks. Please state your name and recognize that there is a second session at the end of the meeting for public comments if you want to hold to that point. So next we move on to the FOIA requests. And Dr. Kyle, will you present those or?
Okay, so on six-ten, we had a requester, Jeremy Delwin Horn. Their response was on six-seventeen, response date was six-sixteen. The topic was recording agenda and minutes for the July fourteenth, twenty-twenty school board meeting. On six-seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, we had C.T. Mills Public Info Access LLC, list of all schools and district level administrators, including name, title, position, work email address, work location, school name, and central office. Response due, six-twenty-four, response date, six-twenty-four. Next was six-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, we had seventy-three-point-five caregivers. I don't have to read it all? Okay, so thank you, I'm learning. And we responded on seven-one. And we're continually responding to that one, it was a lengthy one. But we're working with that group. And then on six-twenty-five, oh, six-twenty-five, twenty-five, Rachel Van Hughes had a FOIA and we responded on seven-two, twenty-twenty-five. Six-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, Rachel Van Hughes had another FOIA on an activity fund for the eighth grade celebration and we responded on seven-two, twenty-twenty-five. Seven-seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, Samantha Peterson, district phone bills, call records, et cetera. We responded on seven-thirty-one with also an extension. Seven-twenty-four, Justin Winnig, Start Bridge Tech. Public records detailing financial transactions made by Skokie School District Seventy-three and a Half. We responded on seven-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five. Also, eight-one, twenty-twenty-five, we had another FOIA from Samantha Peterson. District phone records. We responded on eight-eight, twenty-twenty-five. And I think that concludes all of the FOIAs we had this month.
Thank you, Dr. Kyle. Next, we will move on to staff recognition.
You know, I think as we look at the new school year, I want to thank everyone who will touch a child this year. Not in a creepy way. But every, you know, from the person that greets the kids when they come in in the morning, you never know what that means to have someone look at you and see you and recognize that you guys see these kids and that matters. And I still remember the teachers that I had coming many years ago. But I just want to thank everyone for everything that you do, from the people that clean the hallways, from the teachers that say hello to the kids in the morning, to Dr. Kyle, to everyone who will make this an amazing year. It's my son's, it's my last year in the district for my son, so I'm looking forward to an amazing year.
I want to give a shout out to all of the teachers that will be coming to upcoming teacher institute days. I know there's a lot of work that goes into starting a successful school, started the school year that is predating students being in our buildings. We have our back-to-school bash that's coming up two Sundays from now, which is really exciting and a special way for all students from the district to come together and celebrate and kick off a brand-new school year. And then also a lot of just on a personal level, teacher, staff, admin, families that came together to support families in our district in ways, in times that we shouldn't have to imagine and endure. And it shows the connectedness beyond just our physical employed role in this district.
Just, I want to echo what's been said before and just thank you all to the education staff, who, everything you do up front and behind the scenes, I'm really excited about the school year, so thank you.
I'd like to also piggyback what Bushra said, but also include our community and just say a huge thank you for coming together. I always say that our community is a powerhouse and it's true, the way that people support each other in good times and in bad times is very obvious. So thank you to everybody that stood up and worked hard and supported those who are going through a difficult time in our community.
Same for all of you.
You know, I actually was gonna say credit also, of course, of course, what's gonna be going on this month, but credit to all those who were helping get the school ready. I know Ed and Richard had a lot of projects going on, so, you know, awesome work and all that done. And then there is a recent news article about a former student from the district. And I just think it's a cause for us as a district to celebrate, of course, our fine arts and all that. So I wanted to, you know, give a shout out to us as a district that we're able to, you know, celebrate with that student too.
Thank you. We will now move on to number two discussion, without action items. We have a number of presentations. To start us off, we will have a presentation regarding the IGA between Skokie School District Seventy-three-point-five and Niles Township.
They were supposed to be here, but I can kind of, I can walk through each slide. So you have seven families total, five families housing assistance, two families that had childcare assistance, fifteen children, twelve children housing, three children childcare. And this is specifically just for our district. Total disbursement is twenty thousand, average family four thousand. This is a great tool that we have to help our families that are in need. Childcare fifty-four percent, then housing forty-five percent. You know, I've worked in a lot of different school districts, but to have a partnership like this is really nice, especially for our families that need it. And these are flexible funds, so we're able to support families in need detained by ICE with so many unexpected expenses and systems to navigate, the support needed to help stabilize our community. And I know our community has kind of dealt with that and this group helps as well. And who was supposed to present was Ruth Orme and Johnson, the Director of Social Services. I'm sure there was some miscommunication, but this is a connection we've had in the district long before I was here. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of what we, who we helped last year.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. You know, everybody needs help at some point and it's good for people to know what resources are there. So that's, that sounds amazing. Number, letter B, I'm sorry, you have a question?
So I am really, really excited about the partnership with Niles Township. As may have known, I came from D-two-nineteen school board. We, we had that partnership and I think this is really, really important just to help with wraparound services and immense return on investment. And also it's their, their connections to community organizations and just working to make people whole, working to figure out ways to make you better, safer, more confident families and kids. So very, very excited.
And just another tid I'll add to hopefully do a little bit of diligence since we don't have Niles Township represented today is that, so from the Litter Line feeder schools, we are one of a few that have this signed. So if, let's say, since Niles Township has this, if the student is in high school, that is a part of the family that's impacted, that's covered in that. But if they're in our schools and we did not sign this, we would not be able to provide any sort of temporary assistance or relief. And then item five C has the entire agreement written beyond the presentation for anyone who wants to read it.
Thank you so much. Item B, two B, Building Seventy-three and a Half, report of spring twenty-twenty-five community engagement, sessions one and two.
All right, and I've been asked to present. This is one of the things, I want to be honest with everybody. I've been spending a lot of time trying to learn, wrap my arms around it, learn a lot about what's been done. So as a board, I'm gonna kind of walk through what we did in the spring. And just so everybody knows, that picture that we started with, that's actually our kids. So, you know, as we're talking about this, everything about Building Seventy-three-point-five is about students and how we can support our students. So the purpose was to engage the community. Also, you know, the first part of spring was two community engagement sessions and they were hosted by District Seventy-three-point-five, our community co-chairs who are actually here and we're very thankful to have both Emily and Nick because they're really helping us get this going and moving forward and then FGMA architects. Here's all the different promotional communications we did. These are the things like the weekly, the social media post, postcards. And then the next slide would show actual canvassing door hangers, text messages, news release. Because the goal with Building Seventy-three and a Half is really not just to get the parents of the students that are currently in, but we also want to get the residents to come out and participate in this. Session number one, priorities for our school facilities. Again, Emily White and Nick Worth are both the co-chairs. We had it on April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, we was located at John Middleton Elementary School. Understanding the current condition of school facilities, so we had over a hundred attend. That's a really good number and I come from a really gigantic district in St. Charles and to get a hundred to come out, that's really good. FGMA presented, teacher had some insights on building conditions, and then we had sixteen small group discussions. Newsworthy information, a most common takeaway is that the building and buildings are aging and deteriorating. Key concerns, failing HVAC roofs, plumbing, electrical, windows, doors, ADA, non-compliance, maintenance, and facility conditions affecting learning. Top ten planning principles, updated HVAC, safety and security, ADA, updated electrical, plumbing, roof repairs, replacement, learning space and storage needs, modern technology and infrastructure, sustainability, energy efficiency, and proactive maintenance and planning. Here's the top five, safety, HVAC, electrical systems, roofing, and accessibility. Overall, prioritize safety, accessibility, update infrastructure, plan proactively for facility maintenance. And that was really like a consensus point for the entire first meeting. After the first meeting, we had our second meeting. I think this was right about when I found out I was superintendent. So I was trying to read up on this as it was all going down and kind of hoping I could be there. But I think I had another obligation. But we really were trying to understand the educational need priorities for our school facilities. So we had about seventy attendees, we reviewed session one, had another presentation by FGMA, more teacher perspective, and then ten small group discussion. Key takeaways, current spaces do not meet evolving students' needs. Need more flexible, private, inclusive learning environments. Strong emphasis on accessibility and ADA compliance. Looking ahead to twenty thirty-five, so projected changes, technology, integration, AI, I mean, who isn't in here? Everybody probably here has used AI. If I would have asked that two years ago, people wouldn't know what it was. Last year, maybe half the people would have used it. STEM and robotics, it's gonna be a part of education whether we like it or not. Greater emphasis on social emotional support and more flexible and specialized learning environments. Ideal school features, flexible, adequate learning space, advanced technology infrastructure, safe, updated infrastructure, and fully accessible, inclusive design. Then we had people rank their criteria and the top ranked five, again, top five, ADA accessibility, space for support, specialized programs, safety and security, infrastructure modernization, and updated library and collaborative spaces. Consensus point for session two, ensure ADA is accessible for everyone. Provide adequate and flexible learning, maintain safety and security. Plan for evolving technology needs, update failing infrastructure before systems fail. Improve cafeteria conditions to support student well-being. So the next steps, and this is kind of where we're at right now, just so everybody knows. I'm the new superintendent, I'm Charlie Kyle. I'm excited to be here, but I didn't have a lot to do with it till July first. So I've spent a lot of time with Emily, Nick, and Richard, who's back there running the show. And what we've been looking at is all the work that has been done up to this point, looking at what FGMA and Gilbane is coming up with. And our goal is to have two community sessions to really give us direction on which way we should go as a community. I spent a lot of time working and meeting with members of the Park District, the mayor, the new mayor, the village manager. I've been talking to many other individuals that this doesn't just affect us, it affects them as well. So we're looking to have an October sixteenth, community engagement session number three from seven to nine at John Middleton Elementary. And then a community engagement number four, November tenth, from seven to nine at John Middleton Elementary. And what I'll say is, we wanted to push this back a little bit because once I saw kind of where we're at, I did have some input as the superintendent of the district. And that's gonna be actually an item on the, for the board to approve, is to look at a possible another option. Because when we're looking at how to improve facilities, there's a lot of different options there. So that's really where our next steps are at. And I would just tip my cap to Richard and Emily and Nick, they've done a great job. We've got a team ready to work, but I would encourage the board, if you can, make it. Our goal for those two sessions is to have groups and sit different administrators and board members and the superintendent among everybody else, so we could be there and answer questions and listen to what the community has to tell us.
Thank you, Dr. Kyle. I just want to state, you know, for, I know everyone can't always come out for these presentations, but when we look at the things that are, that repeatedly come up, they're the things that are affecting our kids. You know, keeping them safe, keeping those kids who need accessibility, those are the things that rise to the top. And I think that speaks a lot to the community and that we're giving people what they're asking for.
I have a quick question. Are there, will there be opportunities for the community to actually do like a walkthrough where they can see some of the facilities and what they look like? But also, besides our mayor and kind of the really, really hyper-local representatives, are we speaking to any other representatives such as, you know, our state reps or anybody that maybe should visit our facilities as well?
And Nick, you might have to speak on the mic.
So that we're recording?
Yeah, definitely. Representative Ollickel and Senator Villa-Villam both had representatives at the first two events. So definitely supportive and want to keep coming and we've invited all of our other representatives.
And in terms of building tours, we are, the way we've established it this way is that there's an email address on the Building Seventy-three-point-five website through the district webpage. And if you just email and request a tour of the building, we have staff who have agreed to provide tours of the building from their positions as educators and with intimate knowledge of the space. So people can understand as time makes sense for them, rather than trying to offer sort of like big batch tours that people have to show up for.
Would there be any way to integrate kids giving some of those tours? I think those kids who have been through the district.
So it's a great question. Kids who have gone all the way through, we might be able to consider. It, there's been a lot of conversation about whether we could include students who are present students or even middle school. It turns out that kids love their schools and want to just say how much they love their schools, which is a testament to our teaching staff, honestly, and the district itself. But it's very challenging to get technical responses. We even, we had the opportunity, we considered doing video messages from some students. Even those who thought, I could do it, when you get to the point, they're like, I just really love school. So they're actually very happy. So we can talk, we can talk about the possibility of including past students in the experience.
Even students, you know, some of our athletes that are going to other schools, because I know my kids, when they see other schools, they're like, well, why does my school look like?
Like, why was my school before, born before man walked on the moon? Which it was, by the way, Middleton was. Uh, yeah, happy to talk about that. We're open to whatever ideas. Our, the big need we really have for the board, for the community in general, is to speak to our neighbors who do not have children. It turns out only a third of our district are parents. And particularly older folks who don't have kids in the district or whose kids have moved out of the house, whatever is going on for them, we really want to make sure they feel included and reached. And we, we have as many mechanisms as we can and we canvass the neighborhoods, but we want to make sure that that outreach is happening. So as much as you're all able to involve yourselves and help with that, would really make a big difference, I think.
Thank you so much.
One thing we're looking at this year too is moving some board meetings to different schools, so it's not just McCracken. And after public comment, we can have people set up to tour the buildings. So we have that in the works. So and even like the back-to-school bash is not gonna be at McCracken, it'll be at Middleton because we'll have people that could give tours during that time. So we're trying to build that into this year, so everybody gets a chance to see the three buildings.
Absolutely, yeah. And Dr. Bushra was talking about the opportunities with the community engagement sessions and again, October and November of this year.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Joe Bailey, who's kindly stepped in to really help us out. And I know he's been working really hard over the last few days for the presentation of the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
And real quick, before Joe speaks, I just want the community to know, obviously, all of our thoughts and prayers go out to Karen and her family after their loss of one of our former students, Hamilton. But when Karen had to go on leave, we had to kind of get a budget together. So I know Joe has spent a lot of time working with people in the district office, but also with Karen to make sure Karen did a lot of work up to this point. So it's about eighty-five to ninety percent done and then Joe's just taking it over the line. But I just wanted to share that. And Joe comes to us with a lot of experience. I think his last job in teaching was superintendent at Lincolnwood. And he's also been a CSBO or business manager at Gulf, Wooddale, and Kennelworth. So he's had a lot of experience and I'm just happy to have him. So Joe, take it away.
Thank you. That's quite an introduction. Too many years, too many years. So I'm here tonight to present to you our tentative budget. The tentative budget presents a preliminary overview of anticipated revenues and expenditures for a specific period of time. In this case, it's from June, July first to June thirty of twenty twenty-six. Designed to provide a foundational guide for financial planning, it reflects current estimates and assumptions based on our available data. The budget remains subject to refinement, changes, additions and subtractions as we figure out our priorities, as we figure out other factors that will go into our final budget that you will approve. And even beyond the approved budget, we'll continue to toy with it, mess with it as reality breaks. Our goal is to ensure fiscal responsibility while maintaining flexibility to adapt to our changing needs and opportunities. And it sounds like we have quite a few opportunities. And I want to thank, I want to thank Karen, I want to thank Dr. Kyle for all their support and our business office in America for getting this thing together. It's, it's going to be, it's going to receive some refinement, a lot of refinement over the next month. So don't be surprised. We'll explain to you those refinements when we get there. You can see that we have a couple of funds that we're gonna need to address at some point during the year. There are some things that we're going to absolutely have to address and we're just trying to figure out what those things are right now. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
So again, this is not the last time you will, this is, we'll live on board docs and at a future meeting if you have questions. That'll be okay as well.
Thank you.
And one just, one just update that I wanted to share. We don't have a finance committee meeting set, but America sent out to the board members that are on that. So that, that finance committee, Joe can take things like, we've just added Forecast Five to project kind of budgetary projections. He could utilize that and that would give us enough time for that September ninth board meeting. And we published the tentative budget on Monday, which means September ninth, we could approve the final budget. We don't have to have another meeting. So I wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Kyle. Next, we will move on to the superintendent's update. Dr. Kyle.
All right, I just wanted to share with everybody, it's kind of my first month here in Skokie Seventy-three and a Half. It's been an incredible experience. Over the past several weeks, I've met with over fifty faculty members, staff members, parents, Skokie civic leaders, and individual meetings with board members. These one-on-one conversations have really deepened my passion for leading this district. I will tell you overall, almost to a person, the things people are most proud of in this district is the school system, the teachers, and the diversity. Those are things I hear all the time. The things that people tell me I need to look at are also very similar to what the board has told me in my top three goals, which one is fiscal responsibility, two is to look in, look at student services legally and just look at what's going on in student services, and then three, the last one, is academic. In this past summer, we adopted a new curriculum for ELA, so you'll hear a report from that. But those three things are kind of things I'm focusing on a lot. And I just wanted to share with the community that we are gonna bring back the back-to-school bash, which is at Middleton Elementary School, not McCracken, so Middleton. It'll be Sunday, August twenty-fourth, from one to three. The event will feature bouncy houses, carnival games, face painting, and Kona ice cream, or ice, sorry, Kona ice for all in attendance. I look forward to meeting a lot more students and parents and community members there. I'll also be hosting a Meet the Superintendent night on Wednesday, September tenth, at seven PM at Meyer School. And then I'll host three separate coffees, one at McCracken, September third, at eight forty-five, one at Elizabeth Meyer School, it's September twenty-sixth, at eight forty-five, and then the last one at Middleton Elementary, September thirtieth, at eight forty-five AM. These are opportunities for me to connect with more people than just the ones that took time out of their summer to come meet with me. I just presented Building Seventy-three and a Half, but I'm gonna present it again because it's a big deal. We have two meetings coming up, October sixteenth and November tenth, both at seven PM, both at Middleton Elementary, and we will also have tours available at that. Last, I just want to have a shout out to Charlie, the student voice at the last board meeting in June. Charlie has a great name and he taught- Charlie has a great name, and he talked about wanting to ride his bike to Middleton. And he rode his bike to Middleton, used the bike rack with the Skokie Park District. And then we found out there was language in the handbook that says you can't bike. So I want Charlie to know, we've heard, I'm working with the principal, we're going to work on removing that language if the board approves, and then we're going to work on getting a bike rack. There's a lot of details like wearing helmets, where you could take your bike. Those are things that Christine and I will work through. But I wanted Charlie to know that, that when I was sitting in the audience as not the superintendent, but an excited future superintendent, I thought, "I wonder why that is." So I wanted to share that with the community. And again, I'll just reiterate where I started. I'm really excited about this opportunity. I love working with this Board of Education, the staff, the students, the parents, and the community. And I just want to thank the board for making that decision.
Thank you. We've enjoyed working with you thus far as well. Next item, Item 2E, class size update. I'd like to remind you that this is the number one update and there will be a revision in September of this year. So after we, because this was set at the end of July, and so as we start the new year, there will be another update.
Yeah, and I'll just share with the board that right now kindergarten is a low number compared to last year. It's about ten short in each class. So we're monitoring that. We're hoping more people register. And I'm also working with Helen, the principal over there, is how we could do more kindergarten roundups, how we could do it earlier in the future. I don't know why we're that low, but I don't have an answer right now, but a lot of people have given me theories. But that's what jumped out at me. And actually, the principal, I think my first day on the job, came and said, "We're really low at kindergarten." I said, "Okay, we'll monitor it. Let's hope we get more kids there." But those are the numbers right now. Obviously, people are registering still up until the day we have first day of school.
Do we look at what kids are coming through pre-K 3, pre-K 4, and, and those numbers? So is it that kids aren't coming back?
No, it's just right now I look at last year's memo to this year, and we're about ten short at kindergarten, so, in the class. So that's a lot, and that's what I wanted to share with the board. And so we're going to try and figure out kind of why that is and, you know, where, what we can do to increase those numbers.
Next, some Item F, we have the facilities update, which is again on Board Doc. Ed, do you have any things that you want to highlight?
I just want to give a shout out to the B&amp;G staff and to the Pierbright custodians. They did a great job again this summer. And also working with Karen with the parking lot and the, all the asphalt work we did around here at McCracken. And then in the future, things that we should be starting to consider is the old roof at Meyer. And working with FGMA on the locker rooms and the bathrooms here at McCracken. I feel in my opinion, we need to continue to do one or two major product, projects a year to maintain what we have here at these, at Meyer and at McCracken. And also working with ComEd. We save some money how we installed the new lights in the hallways in here and at the gym at McCracken. We're starting to do that over at Meyer. It's a ComEd rebate. One light fixture usually uses about 7.5 amps. We cut that down to two. So the energy savings for, you know, these buildings that are going to be here are going to be a lot. So little by little, we like to chip away at some of these projects.
Thank you so much, Ed. Next, we'll move on to the technology update. And again, that's on Board Docs. Do you have any comments, things that you want to point out? Alrighty. The next Item H is the financial update. We spoke about the tentative budget. And are there any additional comments that you'd like to make? And as Dr. Kyle said, we did not have our finance committee meeting. So that is probably going to be scheduled later on this month, and we will have an update at next meeting. So next, we're going to move on to the committee reports from outside organization, board organizations. First of all, we're going to start with the Board Policy Committee.
Before we move on, I noticed that Ruth is here. I am just wondering if we can give Ruth, if there was anything you wanted to say or...
I, I think like point of order, I don't know if you can do, that's why, I think we're out of order.
It's discussion without action, so there's no action on this. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We, we presented it without you, Ruth, which is why we wanted to...
It was not a complicated slide deck, so I didn't think you needed a ton of...
Maybe we just open the floor for any questions?
Sure, yeah. My, I was told that my presentation was dusty, so our communications staff person redid it, so I'm glad you got the good version. Yeah, so we've been honored to have your support. Thank you so much. You make a huge difference in the lives of families, including a family who I think you all know lost a family member who was abducted by ICE not long ago. We've been able to use the funds from your school to pay that family's rent for three months forward, which just provides them a modicum more stability. And that's the kind of impact that we're able to make with these kinds of funds. Really change lives for individuals in your community, so thank you so much. I have brochures and my card here for anybody who would like it. I think I've met, I've met many of you, not all of you. But yeah, if you've got any questions about how our financial assistance program works or who I am, feel free.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question, because I think it's helpful for those in the audience. Sometimes it's not, there's, there's the, we have the formal document on Board Docs if you want to read it. But it could be a little tricky to read because it has all those like whereas sent, the statements. Could you explain very simply like what the, what the IGA is, just for everyone else?
Sure, sure. Is this, am I, okay, oh, there we go. Sorry, I realize now if this is getting recorded, it's just missed everything I said. Okay. Um, so the intergovernmental agreement between the township and 73 and a half specifically provides funding to the township to distribute then back to 73 and a half families who come to the township and indicate need for things like rental assistance, utility assistance, and then childcare assistance as well. The reason we operate that way, and it's sort of like a bounce back, is because myself and my staff are better positioned to provide that kind of assistance and to look through that paperwork and make those decisions and the support decisions without interfering with things like, you know, helping the family otherwise, being that child's social worker, being that child's teacher. It's a lot easier when you outsource that to the township who already provides that kind of financial support to the community. So that's a big part of what it is. And then we, the daycare support that is provided is really significant. That allows families to have their daycare further subsidized for their younger kids who are not quite in, of school age yet. So that those older school age kids can focus on their academics and be more present in school and not worry so much about taking care of their younger siblings or their parents can focus a little more on those older kids. So yeah, that's, that was the purpose of the IGA, and this will be its second year, if you, if approved.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for explaining that.
Of course.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you explain how D 73 and a half families could request support? And how we as D 73 and a half can support Niles Township?
What a great question. So 73 and a half families are, I actually just spoke with one of the school social workers today, are at liberty to approach us to apply for emergency assistance at any time during the year. Families can be awarded assistance once every 12 months. And the 73 and a half funds that you all provide is in addition to our other programs that we can support them with. So it's sort of a value add for those families. They could access those other programs that are available at the township at any time. But they can come to my office, call, show up in person, send an email, however you want to get a message to me, and we will help you fill out that application, provide some documentation, and then we determine if, based on income and family size and all that, if you qualify. And then in terms of how you can support us, yeah, I mean, continue to send us your students, continue to tell your families about where we are and who we are and that we're there for them. We're here for your families, we're here to make their lives easier, and we're here to, you know, be their, be their local government in a good, in as good and supportive a way as possible.
I would like to thank you, just anything that we can do to make, make life a little bit better.
That's, that's what we're working on.
I think we should be doing.
Yeah, yeah, as best we can. And thank you, sorry I was, I was late. I have small children myself and well, y'all know. So, thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We're good? Great. I'm going to, you guys can take one and pass them. I'll give my brochures over here and you guys can just push them down the line if you want them. But I know, again, I know a lot of y'all, so anyway.
So we will move ahead with Item 3, the presentations from the chairs of the specific outside organizations. We're going to start with Vicki and the Board Policy Committee.
Okay, there are some policies in our packet today that are there for first read. As always, everybody is welcome to our policy committees. They're tons of fun. As I always say, we're the most funnest committee. But it is a lot of fun. It's really interesting to, to, you know, kind of create the language for our district and the pathway to where we want to see our district go. So, yep, any questions, always feel free to reach out to us.
And then again, Vicki for EdRed?
Yes, I attended the EdRed Legislative Breakfast in July, July? No, August, August 1st, I believe. Most of the conversation, there, there are lots of districts, obviously, that come to this, who are members of EdRed and legislators as well. And most of the conversation revolved really about, or around, transportation. Transportation is a nightmare right now. It is extremely expensive and it's very burdensome for most of our districts. So there was some discussion about mental health screeners and funding moving forward. There was discussion about cellphone banning, cellphone mandates, ban mandates. And it seems that most districts and most educators truly believe in local control and don't want another mandate that we're not sure how we're going to kind of pass or what we're going to do with it. So Safe to Help is a free Illinois helpline that districts can partner up with. And every ID has a phone number on it. If anybody has an emergency, they need somebody to speak to, they can call. It is for mental health support. Some of the, there was a school that was talking about heartening versus hardening of discipline, and I thought that was a really cool way of looking at restorative practices and how some of the districts are approaching discipline. There was a lot of discussion about what districts can do to partner up with local legislators, and it sounds like we're doing a lot of that. So we'll continue to do that and invite our local elected officials to come and get involved and, you know, see kind of ways that we can be supported. That's about it.
Thank you, Vicki. Next, we'll move on to Karen, I believe, with NTDSC.
Okay, so this is my first meeting. I went to their June meeting due to some technical difficulties with Metro. I only made half of it though, just in full disclosure. So NTDSC, I mean, they're doing a great job with our students who are outplaced there. They have a pretty, the financials are great, it's a balanced budget, the revenue is pretty on par with their expenditures. At the end of May, they had 345 students enrolled. Forty-seven are from our district. In the beginning, or in August this month, they'll have 348 students enrolled.
Next is the Governance Committee. We have not had a governance meeting. We have that scheduled for next week. So we will have a presentation at next meeting. Move on to Old Business. These policies were given a first read in June. Now they require a vote. So can I ask for a motion to approve policies for adoption as presented? I'm sorry, are there any questions, any comments on Old Business?
No, but I, I motioned to approve the policies, the policies for adoption. Motion to approve policies for adoption as presented, sorry.
Second.
A motion presented by Member Glebe, seconded by Wolfinger, and can we, roll call?
Roll call, Member Amawala? Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
And Member Chan? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to New Business. We will, Item A?
Yeah, Item A really, it's an FGMA architects. They have been working on one design up until July 1st. And after looking at the design and the complexity of it and just kind of the scale of it, we are looking for the possibility of looking at an alternate design too that might be just right for the community. And really what you're looking at is, we are going to, and Richard, if I mess up, correct me, because you were at these meetings too. We're really looking at kind of a sketch of an alternate design that we could look at and show the community at our, at, see our Building 73. Is it meeting number three or number four, Richard?
It would be CES 3. So that first meeting, what this amendment allows us to do is to develop some very fast concepts based on an alternate site design, again, with the target to cut the project timeline and the project costs down to something that's much more realistic for our community. It's not to say that, you know, the other option that we haven't developed isn't great for our community, but we also want to make sure that we're being realistic, like I said. Taxes are high, they're not getting any cheaper, and the other problem is neither is construction. So the longer we defer this, it only gets more expensive. So we're trying to move fast to make sure that whatever we present to the community has at least enough options for us to, to really understand what is the best pathway to move forward, because there isn't, there isn't a no cost option for the community. So we're prepared to share, you know, working with Ed to tell everybody what we're going to be putting the $7 million bond towards, as well as our future O&amp;M funds and any additional areas that Joe's able to help us find some efficiencies on. But yeah, the, the amendment for this contract is to help us deliver a right-sized option for addressing some of the biggest concerns that we have in the district, which is really focused at Middleton.
We had a meeting last week with the architects at FGMA, and one of the things we were looking at is when you, when you look at it like a new building and the concept of it, sometimes the, what we're asking for isn't exactly what we need. So the, the term that Richard and I have been using is right sizing and making sure that the other, this alternate plan that we're asking the board to approve, I think it's around $30,000. Is that correct, Richard?
So the initial concepts are going to be around $30,000. If we find that the community has a lot of support for that option, then we have the structure in this amendment to be able to proceed with forty percent of schematic design. So it's similar to what we've been doing with this initial concept. And just to, to help clarify what that means is it takes the blocks and turns them into actual refined, like schematic drawings. That stuff takes a lot of time, and that also helps us further refine the construction costs, which is what Gilbane helps us do. So we'll get a rough order of magnitude based off of that initial concept. And again, I know Charlie, as well as many other leaders in the district, and we're finding every opportunity we can to create opportunities for our kids. And so the initial outset would be the concept drawings for, I think they said around $30,000. The full schematic design, or actually the forty percent schematic design goes up to around $340,000. So this, the previous board, which was, there are some of you present still, to give you a frame of reference, the last schematic design was 1.2 million. So it is pretty costly, but in order to get realistic numbers, realistic schedules, we have to go through these processes.
And making sure that we're being forward-thinking, building for what we will need in some regards.
Yes. And I also want to thank Charlie. He's been incredibly engaging in this process in just the short time that he's been here, so.
I'll just say it's pretty much one of the big things I've been working on. And what I'll just share, because I don't want to give too much up before our community engagement, was what was brought back, and I'm really dated, but you would say it's a... is what was brought back, and I'm really dated, but you would say it's a Cadillac? We don't want a Pinto, but I would say like a Honda or Toyota? This is a really good community, maybe I got the wrong car, I drive a twelve-year-old Toyota Sienna, but what I, when I saw it, I just said, this, this isn't gonna work. And so, we do wanna show it to the community and show what was done and then have an alternate design that not only would the administrators have looked at it, but I'm also working with the McMedia president and getting some teachers from Middleton to look at it and make sure that they believe if we have growth, we can still handle it with the, with, with this concept design. So, what I, what I'll just share is, it didn't take me that long to know, like, this is not where we're going, but our goal is by session three and then session four, we'll really know where the community is, because there's a lot of different directions we can go in, but we can't go in another direction if we don't have another design. And that's what, that's what this item is.
And the good news is that all of that, um, work we put into developing those initial designs, actually, it, it's all still very relevant information that we were able to get from our educators, as well as, um, administrators and obviously our municipality, the, the, the villages office has been very supportive of this whole process, so we've already cleared a lot of hurdles that allowed us to look at, uh, that forty percent instead of going even further with eighty percent. So, it's not money that's lost, it's just something that we'll need to, obviously, as Charlie said, right-size it and so we can still benefit from that time and labor that we've all spent on this.
Thank you, any questions, comments from the board?
I just wanted clarification, so the new number in the amended contract, that's, that's a brand-new number, it doesn't include any old schematics?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Thank you, um, so to clarify, it's about a three hundred and nine thousand dollar cost to get the new drawings for the plan, did I understand that correctly, whereas previously it was like one million something for what they've done so far?
They're not exactly apples to apples, but yes, you're right, pretty close on the mark, and that's if we decide to proceed. So, the concepts first, that's the thirty K, and then, and this is my assumption, based on the calendar of engagements that we've placed together, we're gonna run a public opinion survey to get buy-in from the community on what they feel is the best option to pursue. And if they say, hey, this alternate site is the jam, then that's when we start working on pursuing, uh, that forty percent schematic design. But that also involves a lot of other partnership conversations that Dr. Kyle is working on, so, um, we don't wanna get too cart, you know, cart before the horse here, but yeah, that, you're pretty close on the mark.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful, so, the, the fixed fee, like, if we don't do any of this, the fixed fee all in is like thirty thousand for this?
That was the estimate that we got from the architects.
Okay, uh, and, and if we move forward, of course, it's a lot more, because they're, you know, heavily involved in the design and actually, okay, understood. Uh, and then you mentioned there's already one design and there's a few designs. If we approve this, uh, and, you know, we come up with another or somewhere in between the designs, um, are we able, is FGMA able to work with us at all so that, you know, maybe we're not getting a Cadillac or a Toyota, but I don't, I don't know, would that be a Subaru? But something, I don't know what's in between there, but, uh, I, I wanted to ask about that, are we locked in a little bit to these designs?
You're never locked, um, what this will, and the original design would have had the scope if we had proceeded even further, um, but there'll be opportunities to do value engineering, which is where we come in and we start saying, okay, well, can we switch this out for that? Um, and then I'll start getting into some of the weeds where we can talk about some of the finishes we're using, the materials that are involved, um, the physical shape of the building, any opportunities that we can, you know, use to trim or modify things, those are minor adjustments and that wouldn't require a whole nother contract to say, oh, now we need to do another, another design. So, I will just say truthfully, I don't see any other opportunities here unless we wanna suspend the school from the sky, because there's literally nowhere to go. Or, uh, you know, if somebody unexpectedly left, like Idicron, because it's the only place close to us that has enough real estate for us to, to even consider. So, I don't expect you will get another amendment to, to go through another round of designs for, and this is specifically looking at Middleton.
No, that's really helpful, so, uh, I think, I just think it's helpful sometimes because there's a lot of numbers on a page and someone watching at home could be confused. So, what we're agreeing to here is to pay thirty thousand dollars fixed to have another opportunity, option to help with the community discussions going forward, is that right?
Absolutely.
You're approving both.
Okay, yeah, and, and the long-term, yeah, I understand that, okay, I'm very comfortable with that, it sounds great, thank you.
And the reason why it's so much less than before is because we're not starting at zero, we're...
We're only going to forty percent because that's all it says, the, the last concept and, and this community will get to see this at CES three was incredibly complex, because we were doing a lot of phased construction, uh, use of classroom mobiles, all of that adds a lot more cost and just the time alone, you're, you're looking at additional escalation costs, so, the whole project, the way we're hoping that we can present it, and again, we're still working on partnership conversations to make sure that that's feasible, um, is going to be way less complicated and much more straightforward and easier to cost out and yes, much cheaper.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? So, can I have a motion to approve a project authorization contract amendment for Design Services? I move to approve the project authorization contract amendment for Design Services.
Second.
Moved by Alena, seconded by Member Vicki, roll call.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan. Yes. Motion passes.
So, moving on to five B, this is the, uh, motion to approve disposal of outdated, damaged and end-of-life technology supplies and non-capitalized equipment as presented. Do you have any questions or comments?
I just had a quick question, um, just out of curiosity, for the ninety-two Chromebooks that we're disposing, do we have a estimate of how much were end-of-life and how many were actually just damaged and no good?
So, all of those would be getting disposed of because they're likely damaged and also end-of-life, we don't wanna repair them. The district, um, approved the use of group insurance, I think a couple years ago, and we've been maintaining that so that whenever things get broken, we just send it out and get it repaired. Um, and a lot of that was due to help keep the costs at a set level, because they were getting very ballooned, um, for the devices that we're seeing and the damage that we're getting. So, um, I can give more details on damage at some other point, but for this specific one, yes, all of those are more than likely either damaged and end-of-life or just end-of-life, but I, I don't have a, like, a breakout of that.
So, what is the lifespan for these?
I'm sorry?
What is the lifespan?
For Chromebooks, I would say you're lucky to get three. Google says, oh, you can get updates for ten years, but, you know, that's not in a middle school, uh, and also not in an elementary school.
Not at my house.
Our kids are very ambitious, uh, to test, to test those designs, so, and we've got some educators in the room that would shake their head, yes. So, um, that's for, 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 for Chromebooks, uh, for iPads, we get at least four years, a little bit longer, just because those don't break as much, but they're also at our lower grade levels, um, where they're not as, you know, deeply engaged, so. And I can give other useful life metrics if you need them.
So, any questions, comments, concerns? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of outdated, damaged or end-of-life technology supplies and non-capitalized equipment as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Karen, roll call.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan. Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, America. Um, next, we're going to move on to item C, five C, um, we spoke of this earlier in today's meeting, the approval of the intergovernmental, the IGA, um, between Niles Township and the Skokie Board of Education as presented. Questions, I think we discussed this a bit, okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Niles Township and the Skokie Board of Education as presented.
Second. A motion presented by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Jacobs, can we get a roll call?
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan. Yes, motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item five B, this, um, deals with approving continuing disclosure agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty-five with Raymond James.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the question? Oh, go ahead, my bad.
Uh, I was just kinda curious, because the amounts, i- if I read it right, it was like fifteen hundred, right? For the, like, the fee?
Yes, you are correct, fifteen hundred.
Um, I, so I was just kind of confused, uh, why we needed to approve it, and it could be my own lack of understanding, so I was just wondering if we could get an understanding why?
Yeah, she's, uh, she's the, she, she, this Raymond James, uh, employee, she's actually the one that helps us in last spring, she did the actual bond sale for the seven million. So, Karen did put this on this agenda item, uh, so I don't necessarily have the reason why, other than what we're agreeing to is that we continue to look, use Elizabeth Hennessy, who's just incredible. Side note, when I met her, I mean, she proved her worth in the first meeting I had with her, so she's somebody we've used in the past and I would, I would encourage the board to support this.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, that's really helpful.
If I could help clarify a little bit, so if anyone has like a 401K plan or like investments, you always get those notices in the mail, those are required, and so this agreement is really only making sure they disclose all the required notices to any of the bond holders, yeah. Last thing I'll add is I feel like Matthew, your question's coming from, because if anything is five thousand or more the board approves, but this isn't an invoice, it's the agreement.
Wanna make a comment, Dr. Bailey?
All I, all I can say is, um, Karen probably put it on for all these reasons, um, and perhaps she has a philosophy of any, anything like this she wants the board to know about, transparency, and I would, I would think that has something to do with it too.
Those are all great reasons, thank you so much.
All about transparency, so can I get a, um, motion for approving continuing disclosure agreement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five with Raymond James?
I'll make a motion to approve continuing disclosure agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty-five with Raymond James.
Second.
Motion, thank you, motion, um, received from Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Amawala, can we get the roll call?
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan. Yes, motion passes.
Next, um, item five E, this is the, dealing with the approval of tuition reimbursement priorities for, um, school year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, any questions, comments? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve tuition reimbursement priorities for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Motion received, um, by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Wolfinger, can we get a roll call?
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan. Yes, motion passes.
Um, the next item would be item five, um, F, this is the approval of the tentative budget that we spoke of earlier in the meeting for fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-six, and again, this is the tentative budget. Questions? So, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-five.
Second.
Um, motion received by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Wolfinger, can we get a roll call?
Roll call, Member Chan.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Um, item five G, this is the first read. Questions, comments? Can I get a approval of consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Um, received from Member Wolfinger, um, seconded by Member Jacob.
Roll call, Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan, yes, motion passes.
Public statement, public comments number two, anyone in the audience like to make a public comment? Again, reminding you that you have three minutes, we will not respond, but you're welcome to... Um, finally, we're gonna go with the calendar review.
Oh, excuse me, Dr. Nelson, I just had a small thing. So, I just was gonna request to add a future agenda item to revisit how, uh, the district is doing with standard grading, it's been, uh, about eight years since it was implemented in the school, specifically for sixth to eighth grade, but because we have a lot of priorities, I was gonna ask if it's possible, maybe like in a November meeting, if we could just, some kind of report, like how it's going, uh, opportunities to improve, things to change, keep, would be great, so, uh, just wanna ask about that.
Yeah, definitely, um, and thank you, you sent an email earlier this week asking about that, so I think, uh, November, we definitely could put that together, and Kevin Paduska, who's here, is already pulling some things that I think will be helpful. And then I'm also, Kevin just told me right before the meeting that there's some information that was shared with the board before the board turned over with new board members, so we'll send that to you tomorrow too, just so you have some more information, but we'd be happy to do that presentation in November.
And in that interim time, getting some information from what our kids are doing once they get to Niles, going from the way we do and actually getting grades, so, yeah. Any other future agenda items? So, calendar review, we have, um, as Dr. Kyle spoke of earlier, we have the Back-to-School Bash, Sunday, August twenty-fourth, and that is at Middleton this year, not at McCracken, at one PM, we look forward to seeing you there. Um, the first day of school for first through eighth grade will be Monday, so typically we have in prior years, every year that I've been here, started on a Wednesday, but make sure everyone knows this is a Monday this year, um, August twenty-fifth, first day of school for kindergarteners, as in prior years, is one day later on the twenty-sixth, first day of school for preschoolers will be on September second. Our next regular board meeting is on, uh, September ninth at seven PM. Um, and then on September tenth, we have the meeting rate plus facilities plan, um, that's a Wednesday, separate tember, September the tenth at seven PM.
Yeah, that's the meet the superintendent night.
I think Dr. Kyle spoke of a, a number of other opportunities to get out and meet, um, that, meet the new superintendent. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Motion received by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Glebe, roll call.
Roll call, Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at eight oh eight.